Order if you please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and we welcome those in attendance tonight. On the back table are hearing devices along with copies of our agenda. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, Councilmember CO, Dylan Delorko, Kamara Sulaq Kraus, and Mayor Potem Girba. From city staff, we have City Manager O'Toole, Clerk Royal, Assistant City Manager Development Director Green, Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, and DPW Director Searls. At this time, the Chair would be happy to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
So moved.
Moved as submitted, Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Thank you. Was that a second by CO?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All those in favor approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences, so we'll proceed to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. I'll begin with citizen comments from those in the audience this evening. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to either an enumerated action item or an item listed under discussion?
Mary Hess on item 21-200. In the late 60s, early 70s, the city was sued because we were charging triple rates, water and sewer rates, for those that did not live in the city. I think Mr. Levlett was city administrator at that point, and he went to court and he said, "They are buying into the system." So therefore, it was justified, the triple rates. And that's the way I feel about the request for the reduction. We have a big cost, a huge cost, with a new plant coming in and also maintaining, and they are getting into the system. So I'm hoping that this is rejected, this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. With any additional citizen comments from those in the audience this evening? The record will reflect there are none. Then Clerk Royal, I would defer to you. I believe we had at least one or two submitted in writing.
I have one for this one and three for the next.
Very good. You may begin with the first one.
This one is from Kristen Paffey. She says, "Hello, I would like to voice my concerns about Celine's drinking water at tomorrow's city council meeting, please." I work in the evening, so I won't be able to attend. I have experienced discolored water and discovered that many other residents have the same problem in the city. Others have mentioned that they have had this problem for months, years, even decades, and that it happens regardless of the timing of hydrant flushing. We've been told that it is just an aesthetic issue and that the water is safe. Furthermore, we've been told that it is normal for water to turn brown during hydrant flushing and that every city does these flushings. If one were to follow that logic, then every city would have residents experiencing discolored water during their hydrant flushing. No city I've ever lived in has had this problem. This leads me to believe that Celine has a unique problem with the amount of sediment in its water. I would like to know why there is so much sediment in Celine's water. I would also like to know what kind of solutions have been discussed/attempted and the results. The bottom line is that the current approach is unacceptable to me, and I would like to know what would be done to fix the city's problem.
Very good. Thank you for those comments, and I assume Clerk Royal that that exhausts the comments that will be read during this initial public comment period. Very good. Thank you very much. We proceed to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. Excuse me. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Moved as submitted.
Moved by CO to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamara Sulaq. All those in favor approving the consent agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to our one action item of the evening, which is 21-200 Maple Oaks Reduction in Water and Sewer Connection Fee Request. Let's begin with a simple motion to acknowledge receipt of the October 13, 2020 memo from Assistant City Manager Green.
Moved to acknowledge.
Moved by Girba to acknowledge, seconded by Dylan. I'll let Mr. After we No, actually, proceed. Excuse me.
Thank you, sir. As noted in your packet, we received a request from 600 North Maple LLC, also known as Maple Oaks, for a reduction in their water and sewer tap connection fees. Based on utility ordinance that got adopted around 2012, they are allowed to do this. Now, the way they normally do it, it's either based on a study where you can base it on the design of the buildings for your reduction, or you base on usage. Maple Oaks is presenting the case that their tap fees should be reduced based on their usage. They made an initial request back to staff back in early 2020. It was denied by the current staff then based on the findings that it was our belief that these are residential units and it is part of their duty to buy into the system based on our current rates. Economic impact based on their request, they're requesting a 90% reduction, so reimbursement from 621, that has already been billed, and then a reduction from 673, which is currently under construction. The total amount, if approved, would be close to $70,000 reduction, about 50 coming from the sewer fund and the remaining 20 coming from the water. So, based on my conversation with Mr. Fordice about this, we would recommend either acknowledging and doing nothing or rejecting this request. Our rationale behind this is based on the usage presented. We don't find the data credible for this, as all the findings that they showed were compared to single-family residential houses and all the every unit showed either zero usage or no more than 2,000 gallons over a two-year period of time. So we believe the data that was presented is very skewed, and if council did want to move forward, we recommend tabling until either new meters got put in place, or we can confirm all the units are occupied and accurate data is represented. Bruce Michael from 600 North Maple is here to answer any questions. Mr. Fordice is also on the Zoom to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Hey, we appreciate the developer being here, and I think there are a number of residents from Maple Oaks as well. We appreciate your time this evening. Let me begin with Mr. Fordice. Mr. Fordice, do you have any additional comments to share at this time before I entertain remarks from the developer? You're muted at the present time.
Sorry about that. So the ordinance allows for a reduction in fees in what is listed as a multiple residence facility, and that is different than a multifamily development. So my interpretation of that ordinance is that a multi-residence has some level of shared resources between the residents. So it passed The only implementation of this ordinance was Linden Square, both Phase 1 and Phase 2, and those units are maybe more like hotel rooms, you know, where each resident has a bed and a bathroom. Dining facilities and laundry are centralized, and the common living spaces are centralized. These units at Maple Oaks are They're full-blown apartments. They're one- and two-bedroom, one to two bathrooms, they have laundry facilities, and they have full kitchens. So that was my finding when this was first brought up, that those are residence buildings per our ordinance, and the full fee is due.
Thank you, Mr. Fordice. Before I get to Mr. Michaels, City Engineer O'Toole, is there anything you'd like to share at this time?
Just that I share the same opinion as City Engineer Fordice and Assistant City Manager Green. We view the distinguishing characteristic to be whether this is a multifamily dwelling or a multi-residential type of facility, and in this case, it's more of a multifamily apartment-style complex. I don't view this as comparable to what we previously approved for Linden Square.
Thank you for that. Mr. Michaels, would you care to make a statement, sir?
Thank you for seeing me this evening. Our request is based on the fact that there's a very small occupancy compared to a single-family home, and the sewer and water connection fees we were charged for each dwelling unit was the same as it is for a single-family home, which is generally larger, has more people occupying it. Secondly, we were also charged a sewer and water connection fee for the common area, which has only a half-bath and no bedrooms and no occupants. So we're looking for some relief for some of this in some fashion, because we're not impacting the sewer and water plant in the same fashion as a regular single-family residence. What we did was went online to the BSNA software and looked up what the water use bills were according to the BSNA software, and we presented just what those findings were and compared it to the single-family homes that had been occupied and had used water for a significant enough period of time to give us reasonable results.
Very good. Why don't you hang tight in the event that there are questions best addressed by you, Mr. Michaels? I'll open up for questions from the dais for either the Assistant City Manager, City Engineer, or the petitioner. Mr. Girba as the mover, would you like to begin if you have any questions?
At this time, I don't have any.
No? Easy enough. Then we'll open up. Mr. CO, please.
Yes. Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Green, maybe you could answer this. If a regular apartment building were to come online, would we charge per dwelling unit?
Per unit.
We would. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kamara Sulaq.
Thank you, Your Honor. Did you say that the So there's a half bathroom in the common area. Is there a kitchen or?
In the common area, there's a bathroom and a kitchenette, and the kitchenette includes a sink.
Okay. All right. That's the only question I have.
Any additional questions from the dais? Mr. Delorko?
I just have some brief questions.
Please.
In your memo, you had stated that you weren't sure whether it was based on occupancy rates or deficient meters, but I saw a subsequent email come through later in the day that clarified some of that. Can you speak to that?
Yep. Yeah, at the time, we sent this memo, it was just completely based on the data that was presented from Maple Oaks. Subsequent to that, we had We sent DPW out to reread the meters just to see if something was wrong on our end. Based on their finding, three of the meters came back the exact same read, so we're still at a point where we don't know if they work or if the units are unoccupied. And our recommendation, we're just waiting to get in touch with some trustees to get in the basement, so we can trade out the meters to see if that's that. One of the meters that we know for sure works read 1,000 gallons of usage over the past three months. So that already matches what the two-year total was that was presented. The other one is the common area. We do know that works. Our crew was able to have someone go inside, turn on the sink, and they're able to remote read the meter outside, and they showed that was reading.
So we don't believe at this time that there's any defective data gathering or defective meters?
At this time, no. We think it would show up more in the meter readings, but the fact its usage has not changed at all over two years, that's where we think they're unoccupied.
Okay. And also, to elucidate the comments a little further about the numbers that the developer provided on their usage. You basically are saying you don't believe it. So is that Because it's based on comps and not based on actual data, or is some?
It's based on actual data. It's the fact that that's what's being used to compare, where we think since the units are either unoccupied or the meters don't work, seeing a 90% discrepancy between an apartment unit and a house, it's unfeasible to us.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Delorko. Any additional questions from the dais? Councilmember Dylan?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Green, for answering many of my questions earlier in the day. I just wanted to clarify the one point that we did discuss, which is, single-family dwelling does not account for how many persons are in that dwelling. So it could be a single person, it could be a family of 12.
Yeah, and I believe that's what Jeff mentioned when it was originally denied. In a single apartment, there could be two bedrooms, four people could be living there. In a five-bedroom house, one person could be living there. For us, we can't distinguish how many people live in a residential unit.
Correct, and I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the dais? Mr. Green, thank you. There is a motion on the floor at this time simply to acknowledge receipt of the October 13, 2021 memo from Assistant City Manager Green. The Chair will call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. And what is your pleasure? You can move to approve, to not approve, to, of course, table, or to postpone.
Moved to not approve.
Been properly moved by Mayor Potem Girba to not approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Delorko. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Girba, please.
I believe we should be consistent with how we've approached this, with a number of, I think, benefits to this development too, in terms of retroactive corrections and some other things at this point that I think we've acknowledged the needs of this development. But I also believe that it is not comparable to Linden Square, nor is it to the Evangelical Home, the Rock and Village, I think we're done at that time. So I believe this is the proper course of action to take.
Very good. Mr. CO, I believe you had your hand up?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I'd be inclined to give some relief for the half-bath, recognizing that that doesn't provide the same kind of level of service as the toilet and kitchen facility, I guess, in one of the other dwelling units.
My position actually mirrors yours somewhat, Mr. CO. I would be amenable to taking a deeper dive into this matter and perhaps providing some relief, but not in the dollar amount that is being requested. As such, I'll still probably vote in favor of the motion not to approve, but that in no way negates the developer or petitioner's ability to come back with a subsequent request. So just wanted to make that clear for the record. Are there any additional comments? Mr. Delorko, please.
I just want to state for the record that my second to not approve is based solely on the fact of information provided by Mr. Fordice, that this doesn't meet the threshold of our own ordinance, whether we're making the distinction between multi-residence facilities and residential facilities. So, I mean, this is an issue where it's not It shouldn't even really be considered in the first place.
Fair enough. And Councilmember Kraus?
I would go along with Mr. CO as well. The commons area is the one that's bugging me. Agree with Mr. Delorko, it doesn't It's different than Linden Square, it doesn't meet the ordinance, but the commons area for a kitchenette and a half-bath, and they were charged the same? Something to think about.
So maybe what I'm hearing is there's at a minimum three individuals on the dais, maybe more, who would be receptive to a revised proposal and grant a reduction based solely on that, that shared commons area. Yeah, I think that's I think that's noted for the record, and hopefully the developer understands that and can consider his options moving forward. Mr. Kamara Sulaq.
Yeah, just real quickly for the record. I as well think that it's worth digging into and seeing what kind of relief that we can we can give that's equitable. I mean, I appreciate this project in providing housing for the needy intellectually and developmentally disabled or challenged, so I'm amenable to looking at that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there is a motion on the floor, moved by Girba, seconded by Delorko, to not approve the specific request that is before us this evening. If there's no additional discussion, the Chair will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We move on now to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is Commission Committee and Task Force reports from council members. Councilmember Dylan.
A couple of things to start with. The Parks Commission, I just want to make sure that I hit all my notes here, is continuing its Parks Nature Series this Thursday at 6:00 PM. It will be conducted in Curtis Park, and the theme is nocturnal animals, and remember, you can dress as your favorite animal. It is To reserve your spot, please call the rec center, or you can RSVP through celine rec dot com. Also, from the Parks Commission, due to some scheduling conflicts, we were delayed in doing the Green Thumb Awards. So those nominations are now under consideration and voting will take place, so please look for the winners to be announced at a very soon at an upcoming city council meeting. And then last, from the Fireworks Committee. I just wanted Obviously, the fireworks took place on October 9, and it was a fabulous event, and I just wanted to acknowledge the efforts of all the parties that made that happen. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Nick Donna-Frio and Grand Saqua for their generous monetary donation to the fireworks, Polty Homes for their community partnership with us, Toni Kalter for her leadership of the Fireworks Committee this year, the Celine DPW, the Celine Police Department, and the Celine Area Fire Department for their efforts in ensuring the safe environment for the fireworks, for the Celine Area Schools for once again allowing their campus to be used as the venue, and last but not least, Ace Pyro for their incredible fireworks display. It was an incredible event, and I also want to thank the community for coming out and supporting small business food vendors and just showcasing that we are a great community of people. And just to mention that we have not at this point made plans for a future fireworks event. There have been some comments made, and we always love feedback. Right now, it seems that people really did enjoy having them in the fall versus 4th of July, so that will be considered in the future. And so, like I said, we're always receptive to your feedback. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it was a phenomenal event, and I think the response thus far has been pretty overwhelming, that people enjoyed having it in early October. I want to also thank all of the groups that Councilmember Dylan just enumerated, and all the other additional volunteers. It was a great event, we got terrific feedback. It really was a labor of love, I can say that, speaking from a personal perspective, because Councilmember Dylan and I took down more snow fencing than I ever would have dreamed of having to take down on a Saturday night. But it was for the good of the community, so I was happy to do it. Great event, and thank you for your leadership as well, Janet. Are there additional Commission Committee or Task Force reports? Mr. Delorko, please, and I'll jump to the side of the dais gentleman.
Real quick. Just following from our last council meeting, the Environmental Commission is going to be scheduling a second tour for the MRF facility with GFL. More information will be forthcoming on that, so stay tuned. I'm most likely going to send out a doodle poll soon, so anybody interested in taking the tour of the recycling facility will be encouraged to do so. That applies to anyone on city staff and council alike. And then also, following from the meeting, I have scheduled a presentation for Mr. L. Hodges to participate in our upcoming Environmental Commission meeting that will take place this Wednesday at 7:00 PM. He'll be educating the commission on options that we may have available to us to raise the bar as far as being able to recycle more aggressively with city-planned events like Oktoberfest, Summer Fest, and the like, and maybe even look into some bulk purchasing programs to help facilitate making these options available to our small-business communities, specifically restaurants.
Marvelous. Thank you for that, Councilmember Delorko. I believe Mr. Kamara Sulaq had his hand up, and then I'll transition to Mr. CO.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the DEI Task Force, or rather, now Committee, I'm happy to announce or actually share that Sarah Massey is our new staff liaison, and really excited because she has a lot of experience with public relations and has a lot of energy and really looking forward to her contributions. We had a very successful coffee hour, virtually. There was many members of the community, there was respectful and supportive comments and conversations, so we look forward to having more of those in the future. And Candace Jones, who's also a member of the Board of Education, gave us an update on the last meeting where the board unanimously passed the transgender and gender non-binary student policy, and that the community and the board is very excited about that. So that kind of links up with what we're doing in the community and future collaboration with the schools. And that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember CO?
Yes, Your Honor. This last Thursday, the Cemetery Board of Appeals and the Cemetery Board had their first joint meeting, where they're trying to combine both of those committees into one. We talked about the various bylaws and rules that we might put into effect with our city attorney, Tom Forshee, who works in conjunction with those cemetery boards, and I think we took an important first step towards consolidation of those two. Practically, the Cemetery Board of Appeals only met maybe once a year, so it didn't make a whole lot of sense to continue having both of those committees work apart, but rather to combine them into one. So I think we made the important first step toward that goal.
Very good. Thank you. And Councilmember Kraus?
Thank you. I just want to mention that I'll give a better update when we get to the SOC Trail discussion part of the agenda, but Mayor Marl, City Manager O'Toole, and myself met with some folks from St. Joe's. The Healthcare Task Force has been working hard to gather data, and we wanted to present that to them, and they are interested in coming back to Celine. It's very early, but just wanted to mention that. But we'll give more information when we get to that part in the discussion.
Very good. If there are no additional Committee, Commission, or Task Force reports, let's transition to reports or other announcements. Mr. CO?
On behalf of the Celine Area Senior Center, I just wanted to announce that they have a brand-new newsletter out this week announcing their latest offerings for anybody, I believe it's 55 or older, who would like to join. It's a very It's a very good program, I think, that they run there. As the senior member of council right now in terms of age, I must say that I've belonged there for a couple of years now, my wife and I, and we avail ourselves of many of their offerings and find them all to be worthwhile. So I'd highly recommend it to anybody else who might be interested.
It's 50 now, not 55, and I'm a new member.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You said that out loud.
I know.
I told her earlier today she should think of herself as like a fine wine, you know?
Yeah.
Maturing.
Sure, Brian, sure.
Oh, thank you for that. Any other reports or announcements? No? Okay, let's transition then to SOC Trail Lot 20A, which was just referenced by Councilmember Kraus. I'm actually going to begin with the City Manager, who can provide a little bit of the synopsis from our meeting last week, then I'll bounce to our council colleague and the Chair of our Healthcare Task Force, Ms. Kraus, and then I'll end with what I believe ought to be the recommendation moving forward. So, City Manager O'Toole?
Certainly. So as we're all aware, with the GBA development kind of falling off, Lot 20A became available again, and upon hearing of its availability, we did receive contact from IHA St. Joe's that they were interested in kind of picking up the conversation where it had left off when council originally had decided to go with the GBA development over IHA. During the course of that conversation, we did articulate some of the concerns that were You know, reiterate, really, some of the concerns that were expressed during that initial consideration process, and it does appear that they are amenable to finding corrections or at least addressing those concerns moving forward. As Councilmember Kraus indicated, it's still very early stages, but they were comfortable with us sharing this information now and beginning discussions.
Very good. Councilmember Kraus, would you like to add anything?
Not a whole lot. Colleen did a good job of summarizing. There are some things about what they want to bring that really match what the focus group data has been saying, and that was interesting. Urgent care, late hours, has been has been talked about a lot, and I think we're in a better position now than we were a couple of years ago. We can see what didn't work with that sale and make some changes this time around. I'm just really excited. We still have other organizations to speak with. St. Joe is not the only organization in the area, and indeed, their plan doesn't cover everything that we need, so this is by no means the end of our task force, but a good start.
And all you can do is take a step, one step at a time. Well, it goes without saying, I've said this on numerous occasions, so I'll be on my soapbox for just a moment, but this community needs additional healthcare amenities and services. And it directly impacts our residents' quality of life, and that, of course, was the genesis as to why we set up and unanimously approved a healthcare task force earlier this year. This is now the second meeting that city leadership has had with the leadership of IHA. I thought the meeting, the virtual meeting last Thursday, was very productive and upbeat. I would say that their interest in the property and in the Celine community more specifically is very strong. They've already developed a conceptual site plan for the parcel, and I think we're at the stage where we need to begin negotiating with them a sales agreement for that parcel, Lot 20A. Now, we need to ensure that we get a fair price for that property, because it is a valuable Now, we need to ensure that we get a fair price for that property because it is a valuable parcel, and we also need to ensure that there are certain conditions in place that ensure that this community will receive a certain level of care for the foreseeable future. So my recommendation, which was discussed with the city manager and with Councilmember Kraus, and then I subsequently mentioned it and had conversations with Mayor Proten, Girbaugh, and Councilmember Seale, is to follow the same protocol that we've been utilizing in recent years for the sale of specific parcels and that we establish an informal group to represent our interests. And I'm recommending that that group be the four individuals just articulated, plus our listing agent, Mr. Capparisi. So again, that's Mr. Capparisi, City Manager O'Toole, Councilmember Kraus in her capacity as Chair of the Healthcare Task Force. Actually, this will be good experience for her because I don't believe you've served on a working group that's negotiated a sales agreement, and Mr. Girbaugh and Mr. Seale who have. So unless there's objection, that's the course that I would like to pursue. Again, that, it doesn't tie our hands. It's not saying you have to vote for something, assuming that the group is able to negotiate a fair agreement. But I think we do need to start making progress on this, and I'm hopeful that they can gain traction in the coming weeks and months and maybe report back and have something tangible to digest by the end of the fourth quarter 2021. Am I missing anything?
No.
No? I covered that pretty well? Okay. I would allow Mr. Girbaugh and Mr. Seale to speak since you've expressed interest in serving on this group. Anything you would like to add, Mayor Proten Girbaugh?
No, just that I'd like, well, just a little bit, just to say that I'm glad that you're looking into other agencies and other organizations that provide healthcare. And also for me, there needs to be quite a commitment by this IHA organization based on their past history and performance within this community, so there will be a lot of negotiating issues that will have to be addressed at this time.
Very good. Mr. Seale?
Just to second what Mr. Girbaugh said about, in fact, it's something that we need. I'm glad we're talking to more than one agency, and I think we need to definitely give what we need for the city.
Very good. Are there questions from the dais? Ms. Dillon.
Thank you. One of the questions that was raised, I believe during the end of the GBA discussions, was whether there was going to be a new market analysis done for that property. Has that been explored as to the value of that property at this point because it was priced several years ago?
That hasn't been completed yet. And the other thing I would add is I will be asking our listing agent to also price based on a possibly split parcel.
Mm-hmm.
So pricing as a whole and then pricing for what we anticipate may be a split parcel.
Thank you very much.
And to Ms. Dillon's point, because I do think it is a good one, one of the things I would recommend, and actually Ms. Kraus and I had this conversation tonight, is obviously before we meet with IHA that that bargaining team have a session to sort of develop a strategy and approach as to what specifically our asks are going to be and also what we would define as negotiable and open for discussion. Any additional questions from the dais? Well, unless there's objections, then we will proceed in that manner, and of course, we would ask that the three councilmembers and the city manager report out when it's appropriate to do so. Thank you very much. If there's nothing further on Lot 20A, as, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Girbaugh, please.
Just, no, I was going to mention about not Lot 20A, but Lot 13 in the, one of our industrial parks. This last week, we had discussions with another purchase, and it looks forward that that will be going forward too, so that Lot 13 may be sailed within the next few months.
Very good. We look forward to that. And Mr. Green, between you and the city manager, maybe at our next meeting or in one of Ms. O'Toole's weekly communications, can we get an update on where we stand with the other two parcels that are under contract?
Yeah, I can actually do that right now.
Please.
So Lot 5 at the Taff Court, that was under contract with the NICE. They have submitted a site plan, so that'll be going for Planning Commission in their first meeting in November. So if all goes right, we may close on that property before the end of the year. And then the other Lot 13, which is on Beach Court, that one is still in their due diligence period, so they're still doing that.
Very good. Thank you. If there's nothing further pertaining to SOC Trail Lot 20A, as I indicated to my colleagues earlier, I do have a brief update on the hotel project. As I mentioned earlier this morning, over the past several weeks, I've spoken to Bill Long, Mr. Bill Long, from the Celine Lodging Group LLC on a number of separate occasions. I am able to report this evening that the LLC has filed for bankruptcy protection in order to restructure and begin subsequent negotiations. At this juncture, they are having discussions with one singular majority interest party. The two entities will meet later this week. Their discussion will focus on a tentative agreement whereby the new entity will complete the project with some members of the LLC retaining minority interest. More details will be confirmed in November. In the meantime, I am able to share that ANH Landscaping has been retained by Mr. Long to complete grading, weeding, and hydroseeding onsite, and this work should be completed in the coming weeks. I know that subsequent to my email, Mr. Girbaugh sent an email to myself, council, and staff regarding a number of issues, including building permits, taxes, I can't remember what the other one was.
Code violations.
Code violations. I don't know if you wanted to speak to that. I know that Ms., between myself and Ms. O'Toole, we responded, but I'd be happy to yield the floor at this time.
Yeah, her response was just clear that there's $75,000 outstanding taxes, but I suspect that the county would be reimbursing that for that, so the real debate on that ends up being the county's responsibility now.
Yeah, when the property transfers.
And then there's just a couple of building fees that haven't been reimbursed, and then there are no open code of violation at this time. The reason why I wanted to mention these is because we want to make sure if we had any concerns whatever in the bankruptcy that our claims or whatever.
Thank you. And again, as I mentioned, I should know by our next meeting or certainly our second meeting in November if they're going to stay on their current trajectory and find another entity to partner with or whether they will be identifying a separate course in the ensuing weeks. I can try my best to answer questions, but that, what I read is basically what I know. Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the landscaping update because it really has needs some attention. I do have some concerns with loose tivec on there and other things. It really is bordering blight at this point, and I would like to see those addressed as winter is coming. There is a lot of debris on the property, and I think that that needs to be dealt with immediately.
Why don't we, that's a, that's a, that's a fair suggestion. Perhaps we can connect with Mr. Masag, Mr. Barry Waldron, and Mr. Felkamp about some outstanding issues, especially to the exterior of that property. A lot of the debris, I think, will be removed in conjunction with the weeding, grading, and hydroseating, but tightening up the tieback and some other things, that ought to occur and should occur sometime before the end of the calendar year.
I did notice this weekend we did, there was some cleanup done around.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to add, as I, as I drove in for this meeting, there were, there was equipment out there grading.
Good. Okay. Mr. Mayor Shulak?
Yes. Thank you. Ms. Dillon stole some my thunder, but just to go a little further, how often do we, does somebody check on the property? That it is secure, there's, there's, there's nobody or no animals living, living in there that could, could further damage the property?
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Felkamp has been in there in recent months. Colleen, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We met with the leadership of the hotel in the first quarter of 2021.
Yeah.
It's been some time, but my observation, and you tell me if I'm wrong, is that the site was pretty secure and had been maintained appropriately, in fact, quite well during the winter months. Mr. Green, perhaps you have some additional insight?
I think you covered most of it. Just so you guys know, we can't just go walk into properties. We have to be invited. So Mr. Felkamp has been invited a couple of times just to check on the property. Overall, the interior is still in very good shape, so we're just kind of ready, waiting for permits to get pulled again, and a new buyer to come and get going. But as far as we can tell, it's secure, but yeah, we can't just enter a property.
Right. I understand. I'm more concerned that the, that the doors are locked, that there's, there's no evidence of, you know, somebody breaking in, and as Ms. Dillon alluded to, you know, there's, there's loose tivec and the winter's coming. People are, people are going to know that the building is going to be, you know, still vacant and what's going on. My last, my last question is, is for the landscaping, who is paying for that?
I believe several members of the LLC.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Yep. Any additional questions? Well, then let's transition to our last item, which is hydrant flushing and water quality. Do you want to kick it off, City Manager O'Toole, and then there might be some remarks from our DPW Director, Mr. Searls?
Certainly. So I'd just like to kick it off by giving a quick update. We were delayed a handful of days early last week, so we are still in the process of hydrant flushing. A revised map was shared on our Facebook page and on our website. I know we received some citizen comments asking why flushing is necessary. What I would say to that is it is a actually recommended practice for all public and private systems to perform at least annual, if not biannual, hydrant flushing. It's a recognized preventative maintenance item. During that process, it is quite normal for iron sedimentation to be disrupted and cause discoloration. That is why predominantly communities hydrant flush in the evening to avoid impacting residential users to the greatest extent possible. But in those cases where discoloration is experienced, what we recommend to individual residents is that they open their cold water tap, not their hot water tap. If you open your hot water tap, you may experience rust sedimentation entering your hot water tank, which will only prolong the issue. But opening your cold water tap at the lowest source in your house, so closest to the water main coming into your house, to help flush those lines. The other thing I would add is that hydrant flushing is just one of many system-wide maintenance issues that we address on a regular basis. We have a comprehensive main replacement program. This year included Highland, Hill Crescent, Lawson, all got new water mains. Next year, Street Project will feature a handful as well, believe Marlpool and Forest Brook and a small part of East McKay. City Engineer Fordyce could certainly correct me and probably has more information. But also, in addition to that, a regular valve maintenance program. So valve turning, which I know Director Searls will be presenting to council in November, a more comprehensive strategy for that. But are there any other issues? The one other thing that I'd just like to express and share with residents is we do not have the capacity to monitor third-party Facebook pages on a regular basis. If you have a complaint, please use the survey tool. That is the best way for us to get that information, or contact City Hall or DPW directly so that you can speak to a person. That is, that is the best way to let the city know that you have a problem so that we can respond to you.
Right. Thank you for that, City Manager O'Toole. A few things in addition, and you, between you and the DPW Director, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we have tonight and then tomorrow night, and that will conclude our comprehensive flushing initiative. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And for the public's benefit, the last geographic areas that are to be flushed are, for the most part, in the, I believe, southeast quadrant of the city?
Correct.
Okay. So please be mindful of that. Two other things that the city manager and I talked about, and obviously we have some time, but between now and our spring FYI newsletter and our fall FYI newsletter, I think we want to devote a section of that as sort of a fact sheet to water quality and sort of a frequently asked questions reference spring and fall flushing. As she indicated, if you do experience brown or hard water, please use the survey tool, which is on our city's homepage. That allows us to track the data and to respond appropriately. The other issue that I am requesting that the city manager discuss in some detail at your weekly wastewater, Water at Hop Committee, is regulation of water irrigation systems. Many municipalities in Michigan and throughout the region do regulate water irrigation systems, not only from the perspective of conserving our most precious resource, but because they can have an impact, an adverse impact on water quality within our distribution system. So I know that the city manager will be discussing that. I believe you meet Thursday mornings. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I mentioned that not only for the public's benefit, but also for Mr. Green's benefit and Mr. Delarco, that there may be a subsequent recommendation coming to the code review committee because it would require an ordinance change. So just be mindful of that. Mr. Searls, was there anything that you would like to add at this time? And we'll open it up for questions.
Good evening. Mayor, you had mentioned a nice FAQ. I'd like to submit some ideas to that. It's been my experience, sometimes when we're, when we're directing the residents to run the water, sometimes if you don't run the water for a little while, if you don't need the water, that discoloration can actually just move down on you. Sometimes they're pulling it into their system and they're trying to turn over an eight-inch water main that's discolored through a three-quarter inch service. If they can eliminate water use at that time, that'd be best. And then if not, then obviously the cold water stay out of the hot water, and maybe a little more maintenance inside the home. We can make some recommendations there as well.
Director Searls, could you, for the public's identification, could you clarify what hours we're typically flushing?
We start around, I guess there's some valve turning going on around midnight. We finish around 7:00 AM. The highest impact of discoloration would probably be the start and finish of each section as we go, because that's when you're turning the valves and then hitting high velocity. And I might just add that I was up at APWA last week, and I had our flushing app, and it was kind of cool. Norton Shores, Grand Rapids, Bay City, they're actually using the same thing. Sat down with some longtime directors. They seemed to think that we have a pretty good program. They did point out the unique challenges of having three points of source, which makes it a little bit harder to accomplish unidirectional flushing, but we definitely have a program that fits what most other communities are doing, and they're doing it at night as well.
I remember two of the things that I failed to mention, and one actually goes beyond water flushing. It will be a useful tool to communicate all sorts of timely information. But the city manager has spearheaded with Sarah Massey, our PR generalist, the development of a comprehensive list in which we are attempting to get emails for all of our various HOA and condo associations within the city. It is a goal, and I'm sure it will be a recurring goal, to improve communication and provide timely updates to our residents. And so I bring this up because on Friday, there were a number of concerns from residents in Torwood. If we had proactively communicated via the web, via email, with their HOA board, they could have disseminated a message out to their residents saying, hey, DPW is going to be flushing during the early morning hours of Friday. You might be mindful of that when you, when you get up in the morning because you may experience brown or rust-colored water in your, in your sink tub or your outlet. So again, that will be a useful tool, not only to message on directional flushing, but all sorts of municipal issues in the, in the ensuing months and years. And I want to note too, that if you're watching this at home or you're in the audience and you belong to an HOA and you want to provide us contact information or you want to be part of that list, just reach out to the city manager, myself, or our PR generalist, Sarah Massey. I'll also note, because I confirmed this with the city manager earlier today, that our free water testing kits are still available and will be available for the foreseeable future. They can be retrieved at the front counter of City Hall, 8:30 to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday, and instructions are inside. Once you return them to City Hall, we usually get your test results within 48 hours or so. Okay? Hang tight, Mr. Searls, because there may be some questions for you. Mr. Girbaugh, would you like to begin?
Mr. Seale, could you clarify when you said there's three points of source, exactly what are those?
Both towers in the plant.
And so as part of our cleaning, or part of the flushing, we do reverse the flow from those towers, which can potentially add to the.
We, there is, there is a conflict point as we're switching kind of, I guess, the source that makes it a little extra challenging, and sometimes we have to flush in two directions in the same night. So we're, it's complicated with, with that having three points of source.
And is there anything we can do in terms of future resolution, or is it just the design of the system?
It's just how the system's set up.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. Mr. Searls, I just wanted to give you a quick, little bit of accolades. My street was flushed, and right now there's a tremendous amount of leaves on the ground. And obviously, when they flush, it pushes all those leaves right in front of our storm drains. Your crews did a great job of going around and removing all those leaves, and so I just want to remind people that please do not rake your leaves into the street, blow them into the street, and if they are, make sure that they are not blocking the storm drain, or you will get flooding in your neighborhood when it rains.
Good. Mr. Mayor Shulak, and then I'll jump to Councilmember Kraus.
Thank you. So, Mr. Searls, is the, is it sediment or rust or a combination that's, that's in the, in the lines or that's infiltrated the lines that's, that's causing the brown water?
It is the tuberculation, but in our. It is the tuberculation, but in our system, it's the iron that's built up, builds up over time on the inside of the pipes.
Okay. Is there any possibility that it's from some of the maintenance or repairs that's going on?
It's typical in all systems to have that. That's why it's typical as well to flush at least once a year, in some systems twice.
Okay. And then just for public clarification, the water main break at the middle school, now was that totally on their property and a school infrastructure issue, or?
Yes.
Okay. So just like last time, they have really aging infrastructure.
And that's the same pipe as well. It's the same pipe.
And then lastly, with the, with the water towers, is there any, any proof or potential that the age of the water towers, that there's additional buildup or iron, or anything that can be coming out that we're experiencing?
No, I just think it's just the nature of a water system itself.
Great. Thank you for the clarification and all the work you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you for those questions. Councilmember Kraus?
Thank you. Just real quick, City Manager O'Toole, do you know how many residents have picked up a test kit, and do we know what those results are?
I don't know the exact number. Based on feedback from our water wastewater, our utilities workers, I would guess it's around 20 now. Before Assistant Superintendent Vetrick went on vacation, there was about 15. I think they had a handful, again, submitted last week. The only results that we've seen outside of parameters were, I believe, one has been outside of the hardness parameters, and that was, we weren't able to trace the cause of that particular instance, but none of the other test results have been outside of our parameters.
And those residents were notified?
Yes, they are notified.
Is that information somewhere? I'm wondering if we could get that out somehow. I haven't seen anything about that, and I think that would be comforting. I know there's still an issue, and the coloration is an issue, and I'm not trying to make that sound like it's not important, but these results are important, so if...
Sure.
Maybe we could do a spreadsheet, just redact the name and address, and just give a general geographic location. And then I know, I've seen some of the text messages or emails that our Department of Wastewater Water Quality has sent out. So maybe we just, you know, yours, few subdivision, you know, individual one, and then provide the rankings. I think that would be beneficial to council, but also to the community.
Yeah, and that perhaps something for the Water Wastewater Ad Hoc Committee to discuss also on Thursday is how we want to present that, because I think it would be beneficial to also just include some of the general testing parameters that we do at the plant and in the system.
Right. And it is highly technical, so conveying that in a manner that's accessible to our residents, absolutely. Councilmember Kraus, anything else?
It's also online, right? So like the wastewater treatment plant, do we send a test every day? Isn't there a test every day that goes to the state?
There are samples collected, and it is daily for back...
We don't submit, yeah, not everything. We may collect some things daily, but we submit monthly reports.
Okay, that's right. You're right, I remember that. And so that's all available publicly as well?
It's all public record, yes.
On the Eagle website, right? Okay.
It's published in our Consumer Confidence Report. That's, it's a mandate to publish that, and we do.
And we know that Eagle fines, we know this, and so we have never had a fine for our water quality, I believe. Is that correct?
Not a fine. We may have had a concern with the amount of hardness going back into the river, but it's not an environmental issue. It's just a concern being sure that we meet our level with that, but we've never had a fine for water.
For our water drinking safety. Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
During my tenure as either Councilmember or Mayor...
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you, that's all.
Any additional questions or comments? Mr. Del Orco, please.
Just real quickly. Larry, is there any concern that we have with respect to the softness or hardness of the water being tightly controlled enough to where we're not producing a caustic environment, which could accelerate or exacerbate the sedimentation of iron in the system?
I would have to defer that question to the treatment plant. I mean, you'd obviously want to have soft water, but not to the point where it's, you know, aggressive towards the piping.
Right.
But I would definitely want...
I think that's a good question. If we could get Mr. Briggs to chime in and maybe report out at our next meeting in two weeks.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, are you feeling pretty confident that after this round of flushing, that things will settle down and we'll be on a path to having this remediated?
I really feel, because, Council, I've been out to over a dozen residents' houses that have complained, and I've yet to capture the brown water or discolored water. So I think this is something that comes and goes with the system, and I truly believe when we give our residents a much better, more, a stronger platform for reporting and two-way communication, we'll be able to better serve our residents, and that should be something that Colleen gets to see as part of the meter packet. I've found a really good platform that we're going to present to council, and hopefully we can get moving on that. I think the residents just feel we're not hearing them.
Well, when I look at what I see on social media, it's becoming increasingly concerned and irate, to the point where they're making demands, essentially.
And I will say, the bathtub was a repeat picture. We got that same picture twice.
When I hear comments like, "Any city I've lived in, I've never experienced this before", just makes me wonder, I want to make sure that we're not missing anything, that this hydrant flushing is going to sufficiently address the issue, and if it doesn't, then we have a plan to aggressively pursue whatever we need to take care of.
Yeah, I definitely feel we could give the residents more with them being heard in our response, so they understand that we're out there working every day on the system. We are not, we're not neglecting it. It's testing safe, it's constantly tested, and we do want to give them as high-quality water as possible, with great aesthetics.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Gierba, do you have another item? Let's do this, because this is of public interest, and as Mr. Searls just indicated, providing high-quality, clear drinking water is absolutely essential. I'd like to keep hydrant flushing slash water quality listed as a discussion item for our next meeting, in the event that more citizens would like to speak, either at the beginning or end of the meeting. By that point, we will have completed our comprehensive flushing initiative, and maybe you can report out at that time as well.
Excellent.
Very good. Thank you all. We transition now to our second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make common requests to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. I will begin with those in the audience. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to speak to, actually, you can speak about anything that's on your mind?
Good evening. My name is Patricia Raby, and I live at 650 Maple Oaks Court. We came to this meeting really because we thought you were going to discuss sidewalks along Maple Road, which didn't appear on the agenda, but we still would be interested in discussing that matter in the future.
Can I interrupt you?
Sure.
Okay. That's why I'm so glad that citizens avail themselves and come to this meeting, because my faux pas was supposed to list that as an item for discussion. So at the conclusion of your public marks, we will provide an update on that, because the city manager and I discussed it last week.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And while I'm up here, if I could make another remark, since I live in the neighborhood, and my son is part of the 621 building, just to say, I don't know if you guys remember how the common area is configured, but there's really no inhabitants of that, and other than the half-bath and one sink, there's really not going to be a lot of water use in that area. And I don't think that people will be in there every day, all day long, using those facilities. So just to refresh your memory, it's more of an area where for the residents to come out and socialize, which would be periodically, you know, take place in the evening hours. I'm not even sure, at this point, we're having difficulty figuring out how it's all going to run, so I don't even know if there would actually be a staff person in that area all night at this point either. So just to clarify, for the developers' request for relief. Thank you.
Appreciate it. And again, we'll address sidewalks at the conclusion of the public comments this evening. Any additional public comments from those in the audience? No, there were record... Oh, I'm sorry.
Mary Hess. I have been kind of disappointed in that the years that it has taken for our city property to be handled, and I assume it's put to bed because it's voted on, and that would have been the hotel and the property on Monroe Street, that still is bubbling. Now I read on the Celine Post that, and I will try to read it as it was printed, Mr. Jim Marion reported discussions between city were ongoing and active, as the city is, quote, "very much talking about annexing the development into the city." Now, we, I was on council, of course, when we brought in the property on North Maple, and everything else seems to be growing. We have a lot of things going on as far as costs on behalf of the council and definitely the residents, taxpayers of the city, in our water disposal plant improvements and the other concerns with growth. I would like to hear as far as where Mr. Marion felt that the city is very active. I understood that that was voted, we weren't going to involve, be involved in this anymore. In fact, they said something about that the township will have some idea if their sewer plant will be working at the end of October or November, I'm not sure. But I would like to know if there is a consensus that we, in fact, may be annexing this big, huge development along with the layer farm that's presently going on North Maple. It really is time to pause, and I know they were thinking about $5 million donation, but then in the paperwork, it said, but we will pay no more. I mean, the city just voted for $100,000 penalty because of our sewer plant problems, and we better get our own act together. I would like to know, number one, who the council and how the council feels about annexing Angelina Farms.
Thank you.
Are there any additional comments from the chamber this evening? Then I would defer to the city clerk. I believe you have three. Let me just adjust the timer here. Terry?
I do, and I don't know anything about water fowl, so if I just announce these, please forgive me.
Hold on just one second, so I can get this timer right. Not proficient with using it. Please begin, Clerk Royal.
Dear Mayor Morrow and members of City Council, this letter addresses an issue currently being discussed in City Council meetings, the possible removal of the dam, which would mean the loss of Mill Pond in the Celine River north of Michigan Ave. As it is now, when people enter or leave the city of Celine on the west side, they see a beautiful sight, the Mill Pond, with its surrounding lands and trees. The pond is located on the southern edge of Mill Pond Park, a park that is open to all and that provides for many enjoyable and popular activities depending on the season. The warmer seasons provide for fishing, kayaking, and canoeing. Almost year-round, the dog park allows for dogs to be off-leash or for them to romp and swim, play fetch, et cetera, in the river. The banks of the river have plenty of space for picnics and hiking with the beauty of nature. Regular residents of the river include great blue herons, mallards, and Canadian geese. At times, egret, trumpeter swans, and bald eagles are seen. Migratory water fowl, water fowls such as buffalo heads, snow geese, hooded, and common bird dancers stop for rest and food on the river each spring and fall. If the river and Mill Pond no longer exist, there would be no, be loss of habitat for all these water fowl. We, the undersigned, believe that Mill Pond, Mill Pond Park and the Celine River are treasures that the city is fortunate to have, and that they are worthy of maintaining. And this was submitted by 15 people that live along Celine River Drive and Stone Cliff Court.
Very good, thank you. Is there additional public comment?
The next one is from Paul Rudnick, and he states, "Dear Mayor and esteemed Celine City Council members, Mill Pond is a treasure and a unique feature of Celine. In my 14 years in Celine, I have been fortunate enough to live closer, close enough to enjoy Mill Pond and the park on frequent phases. During the pandemic, it became part of my daily routine, as I was not allowed to travel for my job. I was struck by how much it varies over the course of a year, and took hundreds of different images of it from a given point, in manner akin to Monet and his haystacks. I have seen brilliant sunrises and the colors of autumn reflected on its surface, as well as the geese and swans which, which the area. In addition, I have discovered how skitters the herons can be, and how big the snapping turtles can get. They do cross Michigan Avenue. It is my hope that we can find a way to preserve the dam that creates Mill Pond for the wildlife and oasis that it is for citizens of this area."
Very good. And one additional comment?
The last one is from Chuck Spensley, and he states, "Mayor Morrow and members of the City Council, I write on behalf of my family and many city residents to express our opposition to the removal of the Mill Pond Dam. My wife and I have been residents of the city of Celine since 1987. We still reside in the same home where we raised our children, 273 Celine River Drive. Our oldest daughter lives in the Torwood subdivision, where she and her husband have two children. Our younger daughter lives in Bridgewater. We all feel we have a vested interest in Celine. While the pond, parks, nor river are visible from our home, we can certainly vouch for the popularity of those areas, as evidenced by the sounds we can hear, and when the strolling of the park at the north end of our subdivision, the many people and activities utilizing the subject area. Also worthy of serious consideration is the nature provided to this area within our city limits. All the aforementioned is outstanding. I have read about the findings of the Spicer Report commissioned by the city, as well as an excerpt from the Celine Post article dated September 21st, and make the following observations. One, the dam's design is more than adequate to meet the state's requirements. Two, recommendations that came from the plan seem reasonable and feasible. Three, some of the, some of the recommended work has already been performed. Four, updating the emergency plan and maintenance and operation plan seems to be reasonable and feasible. Five, certainly in consideration of a fair amount of expense, there are levels of maintenance and upgrades that would preserve the natural setting within our city limits. Worthy of consideration are cost savings for engineering costs involving the new riverbed and expanded riverbed and park maintenance. I bring to question, in consideration of costs involved, adding new parks and bicycle and walking paths in new municipalities. Are similar funds available from agencies or state departments for environmentally friendly, efficient parks and dams? The Mill Pond River and Parks are beautiful landmarks. What a shame to dismantle such a fulfilling advantage for Celine residents and the city."
Thank you, Clerk Royal. We appreciate all those comments this evening. I do want to state again for the record, there is no consensus at this point as to the future of the Mill Pond Dam. As many are aware, City Council did unanimously approve some additional analysis be done on the dam. The city manager can correct me if I'm wrong. We suspect that that analysis and report will be submitted sometime in the next couple months, 60 days. Is that fair?
Correct.
Correct. Clerk Royal, what I would ask is that when that issue is added again to a council agenda, that we notify the individuals who have written to us and make sure that they're aware that we'll continue the discussion about the future of the dam and Mill Pond, and encourage them to attend and participate if that is their wish. As it relates to Mrs. Hess's comments, I did respond to an inquiry on Facebook this weekend. I would not frame our one discussion with Celine Township and the developer the ways my colleague and friend, Mr. Marion, did. What I indicated on Facebook this past weekend is that we have simply talked to the township and developer. No formal proposal has been drafted, nor is one being considered at this time. And transitioning to sidewalks, and I believe Mr. Gierba, Mayor Pro Tim Gierba was also privy to this conversation, but we noted some pretty significant sidewalk deficiencies in town, and I made a brief list. Maple Road, which of course was articulated earlier, Mills between Russell and Michigan Ave, East Michigan Ave and Bennett. And I don't want to steal the city manager's thunder, but you have outlined an approach. Do you want to talk a little bit about that for both council's benefit and for the public's?
Certainly. So what we've determined is really identifying, I think we settled on four or five priority areas that we'd like to target, private property owners who have a sidewalk deficiency. areas that we'd like to target private property owners who have a sidewalk deficiency, working with them over the next year to fill that gap. In addition, I think Maple Road is a great candidate because that would also coalesce with the project that we have beginning in the fall of 2022 for the East Belt Project. There will be a pretty significant enhancement of the crosswalk along Maple Road. I believe City Engineer Ford, I said, the east side from Maple Oaks South to Echo Court will be included in that. But essentially, that's the strategy going into the construction season for 2022 is to identify those priority areas and then on a recurring annual basis, do the same thing. Work with four to five property owners in a given area to really connect on completing our sidewalks.
Thank you. I think the five that we identified again were Maple, Mills, Michigan Ave, Bennett, and Monroe Street, specifically the Addient property. And I think from our discussion, what we, what we agreed on was that sometime before the end of this calendar year, that you would document the city's concerns and our desire, more importantly, our desire to work collaboratively to install sidewalks to these various property owners.
And as you recall, that will also require some review of previous site plans or planning condition approvals, because in some cases, those entities had a, have a condition still hanging out there.
Very good. When those letters are distributed and sent, can you notify council and of course, keep us abreast to whatever response that you get?
Of course.
Very good. Are there any questions? No, easy enough. Then I would note our upcoming meetings, which are scheduled for the first of November and the 15th. At this time, the chair would, you know what, I forgot. I'm glad I'm remembering these things, albeit at the 11th hour. We were supposed to discuss a request from Salt Springs Brewery regarding a tent. And I apologize, I thought that was enumerated on the agenda, but it was not. Mr. Green, can you report out on that?
So on Friday, I received a call from Mr. Ron at Salt Springs Brewery. He requested that they have the same ability they did last year to place a commercial tent outside for the winter season. I informed him that this would have to go before council, just like it did last year, that we'd need a letter in writing with his request. Unfortunately, I did not receive that before this meeting. I did share with you guys the ordinance that you adopted last year. If you guys were to go forward with that again, either tonight or at a future meeting, it'd be that exact same ordinance unless you guys decide to change it with just an update ordinance.
Very good. Are there questions for Mr. Green? So as I indicated in early, in email earlier, because Mr. Schofield and his associates are proposing the same configuration, design, and dimensions as last year, I was comfortable moving forward. It had been my hope that Mr. Schofield would be able to be in attendance this evening to speak to the issue. He might be on his way. But I think there was an issue with his vendor, which is why he wanted to get this on tonight's agenda. So in a spirit of trying to be accommodating to our businesses, especially those who have suffered under the pandemic and the subsequent shutdown, I thought it was important to move forward if the group is amenable to that. Are there questions for Mr. Green, Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. First, I'll be frank, I'm not prepared to move forward. We do not have a formal ask at this point as to what, you know, to say that it was what he did last year. I would like to see something in writing with details. And I do have some concerns about it. I would like to see a written evaluation by our new fire chief and make sure that he doesn't have any concerns about tents. And are we looking at, you know, this tent? And then are we looking at individual tents and the igloos and wind barriers? I mean, are we looking at, I want to, you know, if we're going to look at something, we need to look at the big picture of what we're approving. I don't want to just say, yes, we're going to allow tents, and it's not exactly what we meant, and then try to work backwards from it. And so I really would like to have a very thoughtful discussion. If we want to start the conversation now, that's fine, but I don't feel as though it would be appropriate to make a decision at this time.
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Schofield arrived. Ron, if you'd like to come to the podium, I framed the issue briefly, and Mr. Green provided some context as well. Do you want to talk a little bit about what you're proposing and why you believe it's important for the city council to consider the request this evening?
Thank you. Well, first off, I'm impressed you guys got through the meeting so quickly. I've been trying to get up here to catch you. So what we would like to do is put up the exact same tent that we did last year, okay? This tent is bulletproof to 120 mile-per-hour winds, 30 or 40 pound per square foot snow loads. Basically, it's a field hospital made out of structural aluminum and heavy gauge vinyl, and it costs $4,600 a month. So a little over $1,100 a week for us to put it up. This isn't a money-making adventure. It's to give people that will not come into the building an opportunity to still go out because we still hear a lot about that. And we also have a wedding that's going to happen on New Year's Eve that they've requested a tent for overflow for their people. So it's basically, you know, a repeat of what we did last year. It has lights in it, it has some electric heaters in it, it has entrances and exits. I mean, it has all of the things that were approved last year. There's nothing unusual about it.
Mr. Schofield, the tent for the winter season of 2020, 2021, I'm assuming that was reviewed by the then-fire chief Craig Haft?
They came out to the building, and I mean, I believe we even put a CO2 detector inside the unit. We weren't asked to put fire extinguishers in it, but I mean, you know, we'd be happy to comply.
So if we made a motion tonight, I'm assuming you would have no objection if there was a condition placed on the motion that we would, we would make the, we would grant the request contingent upon review and approval by the now-fire chief Jason Spurley?
Sure. That's not a problem. I guess my only request would be that we do it as expeditiously as possible because we need to write a check and, you know, we're kind of fast-tracking. We've already lost, the goal was to have the tent up by now and have it down the first week of January. It's a three-month commitment from the night tent company. So now we're, now we're staring down mid to late January. So it's a three-month commitment. If business is absolutely dead and doesn't demand it after New Year's Eve, it'll just come down and we'll just take that on the chin. But like I say, we get a lot of positive requests for people to be able to still sit outside, plus in inclement weather, we can have the doors open, the sides open, you know, like days like today, but have them to be raining, just to, again, give people an opportunity to come out and, but still be out. But I'm happy to, yeah, if we can get the fire chief to come out, I can get the plans from the, from the tent company and he can review them. Again, these are engineered structural buildings. It's, this is not a pop-up tent. It's not an igloo that will blow away. It's literally bolted to the ground.
Very good. Well, like I indicated earlier, I'm comfortable moving forward, but that's not a decision that Brian Morrow can make in a vacuum. So I welcome the thoughts of my colleague. Can I start with you, Councilmember Cross, and we'll work our way around the desk?
Well, sure. Mr. Schofield, can you remind me what, when would it come down?
Well, we have a three-month commitment. And I'm being told that in the next week to 10 days, they would put it up. So I would, you know, literally worst case is going to be the end of January.
So it's not, you're not, you wouldn't be wanting to extend it or make it permanent? You don't even own the tent?
No, gosh, no. I wish I did, then I would have to pay these exorbitant fees.
Hey, what do these things run now? I'm curious.
The tent itself?
Yeah.
I would, I would venture to guess tens of thousands of dollars. I mean, like I say, this is, this is a, Knights Tent Company puts up substantial, like things that you see for Meacham auctions and things like that.
Yeah, no, I ate in a lot last year, so I'm pretty familiar.
It's a very substantial tent.
Yeah, so I, I agree with Ms. Dillon in a way. I, I'm completely for this and will vote in the affirmative. But I, it feels weird not having a paper trail or request, and I understand you're trying to be expeditious, so I do see what you're saying, but I would be willing to move forward with this because last year, you already, you did that already, right?
Like I say, it's, it's the same exact setup, same company, same setup.
Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Councilmember Kamerasulak?
Thank you. I'm also for this. I like the idea. I thought it looked really good last, last year. About how many people does the, what's the capacity of the tent?
Well, last year, we were restricted by, you know, the COVID regulations. I mean, the capacity of the tent has to be upwards of, I don't know, 80. You know, if you did two long rows of seating, you could probably easily put 80 to 100 people in it. I believe, you know, what we had were two tables of eight and six tables of four, so whatever that math is, I think it's somewhere around 50, 50 to 55 people, somewhere in that.
Okay, so very...
We're not look, I don't think we're going to pack it. I mean, we're already seeing, you know, business levels come down with the nice weather, obviously, when the patio, people can go out and sit on the patio, it's jammed, you know? And I don't think that we're going to, last year, people were forced to go outside. I don't see that happening this year. So we're even going to get some soft blankets and things to sell to folks just to help them out a little bit. But it's really going to be a bit of a trial run to see if this is something that people are still going to grab onto. But I did speak with someone the other day that they are just adamant, they are not going into buildings until such time that there's no risk.
Okay. Well, I feel, I don't feel the most comfortable that this wasn't, wasn't on the agenda, and I'm not, I'm not looking at exactly what was, that it is going to be exactly like, like last year. So this has kind of caught me off-guard and I'm still kind of processing because I understand your, your need and that time is of the essence.
It caught us a little, like I say, the tipping point for us was this, the wedding party on New Year's Eve. And literally, it was Thursday of last week that we finally, you know, came to an agreement with the terms for their party, cost in terms of their party, of which having a tent is one component. This company is happy to come out and put up this tent for $4,000 for one day, and we just thought we could, yes, for one day. And we just thought we could mitigate that and use it to our advantage. So when I called, I sent a quick note to Mayor, he told me to get ahold of my green. That's when I found out, well, the day before was the day for the packet submission. So we weren't, like I say, until the day after the submissions were due, we weren't sure that they were even going to go ahead with it. So I guess in hindsight, I should have been prepared at least to have it in here and on agenda, but...
Well, and Mr. Schofield, if I may, in all fairness, my response to you was a little sluggish because I was at a conference, I think I indicated in Metro Detroit, and as Mr. CEO might be able to, to support me on this, my internet reception was abysmal, to say the least. So that was, that also contributed to a bit of the delay.
I'd be happy, I'd be happy to get a package together for you in the next day or so that you can, that you can have for a review of the structure and otherwise. Like I say, I believe it's going to be the same data that we had had from last year, so it should be easy to obtain.
Okay. Ms. O'Toole, can I put you on the spot?
That's what you pay me to be put on.
All right, thank you. So would this be setting a precedent and what, could you, could you weigh in on this? Because I, I'm pro-business and like, like most people, love, love salt. But what are, what are your thoughts?
The way that I would recommend approaching this is considering adoption of the moratorium. The document that city, or Assistant City Manager Green set out earlier today is the moratorium that we adopted, the 120-day moratorium on the 72-hour restriction of temporary tents. This wouldn't preclude a business from still having to go through the same permitting processes that they would go through for any temporary tent, which will require the review by our building department and a safety review by the fire chief. So if you adopt the moratorium again, that simply allows our staff to continue doing what it did last year in approving those facilities. Now, full disclosure, in adopting that moratorium then, we may have other facilities that want to, you know, take us up on that opportunity and put up temporary tents in excess of 72 hours, but they would have to go through the same permitting process that they did last year.
Right, okay. I appreciate that information. That, that gives me a bit more, that sounds good. Thank you.
And if I, if I may, that would be my recommendation to council. If you do consider a motion, make it a motion to adopt, I believe, ordinance number 832.
With conditions, or does a motion to adopt ordinance number 832 suffice?
I believe that's sufficient.
You wouldn't need to say, subject to review and approval by the building or the community development department and the fire chief?
No, ten permits already cover that.
Okay.
They still have to go through, as Ms. Kline said, they still have to go through that.
So to permit Salt Springs to do what he's, he's petitioning, it would just be a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Correct.
All right. I'll get to you in just a minute, Mr. Girbaugh, just to go around the table. Anything else, Councilmember Kamerasulak?
Thank you.
Mr. CEO?
I'm not familiar with the moratorium language, and then I did not check my email today after a certain time because I was out on the road. This moratorium puts the stop to what, the current ten ordinance?
It puts a stop to the current timeframe enforcement. So currently, people, so Mr. Ron could put up a tent right now and go through just community development part. The issue is, it would have to come down after three days or he would get a ticket. That's what this moratorium would stop. It would allow a tent to be up for 120 days straight.
Okay, all right.
Nothing else, Mr. CEO?
No, sir.
Councilmember Dillon, anything else?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to preface saying that this is nothing against Salts, this is, this is a procedural thing. We have discussed this countless times, that we are not going to make decisions on the fly. We did not receive this information in the proper protocol. Some members didn't receive it due to timing. This is something that we have talked about over and over again. I don't feel as though this is an emergency situation that needs to make a decision at this moment. If you look at this ordinance that you're talking about adopting, 90% of the information is out of date. It is dealing with restaurants that are at 50% capacity. That is a non-issue at this point. We're talking about 120 days when a petitioner is asking for three months. It also has a clause in there for an additional 120 days. I think that there needs to be a review of this document and a thoughtful discussion before we make a decision. I am very concerned about us making a decision that's going to affect one business that in the bigger picture is going to affect a lot of businesses. It may not be the outcome that we want it to be. And I really would hope that my colleagues would be thoughtful in this, in really taking the pause at this meeting and that we can come back. I appreciate that you do have an event coming up. I also have concerns of whether that turns from restaurant capacity to event hosting and if that's a different window of usage. And so that's something that I don't know. And so I really would like everyone to be thoughtful about this. Thank you.
Mr. Girbaugh?
The moratorium, when we said that, did that have a timeline on it? Is it all expired? I mean, we made this, did we have, like, sunset at June 30th of this year?
The previous one?
Yeah.
It was the same thing, 120 days. So it expired, I think it was roughly this time last year. So I think it expired end of January, early February last year.
Okay, so it's all right, so there isn't, would just be a continuation of what we currently have?
Yeah, I think it would be technically a new ordinance, that's the other one, it's like a temporary ordinance that you guys adopted that expired. That's what we're looking for approval for?
Okay, that's all.
What you got right now? Mr. Delarco?
Yeah, I just want to state for, at the outset, I have no issue with what you're trying to do. I certainly appreciate trying to facilitate the interests of small businesses, but I definitely am persuaded by Ms. Dillon's commentary on procedures and protocols and how we need to look at these things carefully and potentially update the moratorium to reflect current conditions and not rely upon a document that's since expired. I don't want this to drag on. I think this can still be done expeditiously in the interest of everyone involved, so I'm going to, I'm going to vote no on this one.
Okay, let me, let me ask this question because I think there could be a compromise. Would the group be amenable to waiting a couple days? Well, first, I understand that the petitioner has a, there's a timing issue here, and he's looking for some certainty and clarity moving forward, and I can respect that. And again, as I indicated in my, my opening remarks, I think our businesses, particularly our... our restaurants, have been, quite frankly, devastated over the past year and a half, and if we can offer, if we can extend a knowledge branch and give them some support, I think that that is, is, is meaningful and important. So I'm wondering if the appropriate documentation can be provided, and if this group is amenable to convening a very quick special meeting sometime later this week to consider and hopefully approve Mr. Schofield and Salt Springs' request? Can I start down at that end of the dais?
I have no issue with that.
Okay, Mr. Girbaugh?
I have a fight with next Monday.
Two weeks from, or next, oh, a week from today, okay? Councilmember Dillon?
Yes, I, I'm agreeable to a special meeting once materials are received.
Okay, Mr. CEO?
Sounds like a reasonable compromise to me.
Mr. Kamira Sulek?
Did you say that there's a, are we looking at next Monday?
Well, that was, I, I didn't throw out a specific date, Mayor Protem Girbaugh did, I don't know how that works with your timeframe. Our, our next regular meeting is, of course, two weeks from today, so obviously, if we met next week, that would provide staff a little bit of a window, but hopefully still get you the approval sooner than if we waited to our next regular meeting.
Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
Or a council question? So it sounds like there's more afoot here than just, we're looking to have a tent put up for three weeks. I hear the discussion of the moratorium, you know, ordinance that was written, apparently last year, so it sounds like you, and, and I would imagine that other businesses, like Paul at Brecken Grille, he had his tents up last year, I think, I mean, there are gonna be other people who are gonna approach you for it, so it sounds like you have some things that you have to cover as far as how you're going to allow these extensions.
Yep.
And that's business of the council.
Yep.
Yes, we would, I need to, I guess, just for myself, you know, start going through the motions, like, we're gonna do this the way that, you know, I would have preferred to have done it, which was have a packet to you on Wednesday.
Sure.
Type of a thing, so I will gather this information and get it to, you know, the, give it to...
Work through Mike.
To Mike, okay.
Yeah, work through Mike. And I think concurrent to that, if there is consensus to meet next Monday, City Manager O'Toole, we could reach out to some of our other downtown restaurateurs to, to really hone in on what their plans are, reference outdoor seating for this, this upcoming season.
If you'd like, I can reach out to Paul, and while he didn't put up any type of devices last year, but I know Paul did, and I don't know, Dan has his thing, but his is sort of built in now.
Right, if you wanted to reach out to Paul, we can certainly reach out to Paul as well, the city manager and I had a meeting with him on, on a whole host of separate issues about a week ago, he did indicate that he was considering tents and was gonna get in touch with the, the current fire chief for, for review and evaluation of his tentative plans.
Let me get my homework done, and I'll get that to you in the next day or so, so that everybody can see where we're going with it, I'll get the structural drawings, engineering drawings, fill out the permit, get all these things to Mike, so that our ducks are in a row. I'm going to have to coach this with our tent company that we're moving forward with it.
Yep.
Because we've, we already got bounced a week, because I, I kinda hemmed and hawed the other day, so at any rate, they're, they're telling me we should be up by the end of the month, and I guess in a perfect world, if we go through the process and you folks approve it, then we're good to go.
Yep.
If not, and it's not approved, then I'll just have to figure out how to get my deposit back.
Sure. We will work with you to get the approval.
No, and I appreciate that, and I apologize again for not getting the right notes at the right time, I missed it by about twelve hours, I think.
It happens. I think I stopped with Mr. Kamira Sulek. Councilmember Kraus, let me zero in on Mr. Girbaugh's proposal about next Monday.
So I'm fine with that, Healthcare Task Force meets at seven, though?
I was gonna propose six o'clock, and I bet we can be in and out of here in a half hour.
I'm good.
Okay? So six PM next Monday, Mr. Delarco?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Girbaugh, that word for you, Councilmember Dillon?
Uh, yeah, I can make, my schedule accommodates that.
Okay, Mr. CEO?
Yes.
And Mr. Kamira Sulek?
I believe so.
Okay, then I actually, I would like a motion, because we're scheduling a special meeting, I would like a, a motion then to schedule a special city council meeting on, what is the date?
Twenty-fifth.
The fifth, on November the twenty-fifth at six PM to consider the moratorium on outdoor tents.
October twenty-fifth.
October, what did I say, November?
Yeah.
I'm a month ahead, sorry.
So, so moved.
Moved, and it was the second by Girbaugh? Thank you, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose say nay? I say have it, and that meeting is scheduled for next Monday at six PM. Thanks, Ron.
And thank you all for going, you know, out of your way to do that, I realize your time is valuable, you're also getting me out of a staff karaoke party next Monday.
Oh, boy. Well, if your singing abilities are anything like mine, you may wanna miss that.
Nobody wants to see that.
Okay, fair enough. We look forward to seeing you again next Monday. If there is no additional business to be brought before city council this evening, again, I apologize for the, the late additions, I would entertain a motion then to go, to convene in a closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, city council, and it pertains to potential litigation, city council will reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of the closed session. Moved by Girbaugh to convene, and seconded by, was that Kamira Sulek?
CEO.
CEO, I'm sorry. The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Kamira Sulek?
Yes.
Councilmember CEO?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarco?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Girbaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraus?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes, we are convening to close session at eight thirty-nine PM.
Motion to reconvene into regular session at 9:21 PM.
So moved.
Moved by CO, is that seconded by Mayor Portem Girbaw?
Correct.
Thank you sir. I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Camaro Sulek?
Yes.
Councilmember CO?
Yes.
Councilmember Del Orgo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Girbaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Proust?
Yes.
Mayor Morrow?
Yes. We are convening into regular session at 9:21 PM. Is there any other business to come before, so the city council this evening? Then note that we do have a regular meeting in two weeks and a special meeting to consider a moratorium on outdoor tents next Monday at 6:00 PM. At 9:22, the chair would be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn this regular meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Girbaw, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded again by CO. All those in favor of adjourning say aye.
Aye.